Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order this special meeting, public hearing and executive session of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. The date is Thursday, May 10, 2018. The time is 3:06. We'll start with a roll call from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Pam Kirby.
Barbara Perleberg.
Ms. Beckham will be joining us shortly, I understand. So four board members are currently present and we do have a quorum. If you'll all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll jump into our first agenda item, our public hearing on adoption of fiscal year 2017-2018 expenditure budget revision two. As posted pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.02 and ARS Section 15905 DE, notices hereby given to the members of the governing board and to the general public that the governing board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, May 10, 2018 at 3:00 PM in the boardroom, Mojave District Annex Rooms A and B, 8500 East Jackrabber Road, Casa, regarding adoption of the fiscal year 2017-2018 expenditure budget revision. I believe Dr. Virgil will speak to us first and then there will be time for public comment.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the governing board. Dr. Fuller, good afternoon. Before I get started on this, we did have a, we received a complaint from a concerned citizen that we weren't following statute on this public hearing and we researched it, we contacted outside counsel, and we've determined for the revision that there was no need for a 10-day notice and publication. So I just want to be upfront on what we had received. We're gonna start, and I just, this is kinda hard to see. We're gonna look in the lower right-hand corner. And what we're gonna do is, I made that a bigger of that lower right-hand corner and then added the columns so that you can see revision one, because we're gonna start where you left off, and that was the revision number one that you approved in October of '17, and then this revision, and then the differences. And so we'll walk, walk through the differences. So we'll start with the general budget limit, the general budget limit, and you can see the differences between the first revision and the second revision. And as far as what they are, the asterisks on that first number, I want to point out, that's ADM, and I put the asterisks on it so you wouldn't confuse it with a dollar amount and try and add it up and not be able to total it out. So that's ADM, and you can see that we picked up some ADM. That first revision that we did in October was still an estimate of ADM, and this one is actual as we know it. You know, when you, when you do the budget pages, it's kinda like when you do your taxes, you know, and you have schedules, and then the, you know, and then you move the numbers from one page to another. It's the same thing with the budget. So we start in the worksheets, and the line nine, page three of 15, the big number, that's the base and the TEI and how it changed. Under it, the line, Roman numeral 12, we had the audit, and that is 2,000 less. That was a correction on the revision one. It was the audit figures from 2017. It should have been the audit cost of 2016, because if you think about it, you wouldn't have known what your audit cost was in '17 when you adopted the budget, because you hadn't closed out '17 yet. And so the form says to use '16, and when they originally did the original one, they erroneously put in '17s, trying to get the most up-to-date number, as opposed to following what was on the instructions for it. So we made that correction. Then line eight, page two of the budget, and line 13, Roman numeral 13, page three of the worksheet, that's the same number. In other words, we're gonna take it from this page three of 15 on the worksheet, and we're gonna take that same figure and put it on line eight, page two of the budget. And again, that's just like when you do your taxes, and you take one number and you move it from one form to another. And that is, that number is that 1.06% stipend that was given last year, and we had, we had to adjust that to an actual number, because it was a estimate prior to that. Line 14, Roman numeral 14, and line, Roman numeral six, that is the basic revenue control limit and the base level. And that is just simply a function of adding the numbers up and coming up with that difference. And then the transportation revenue control limit is line, Roman numeral nine. That's, that remained the same, but the reason I put that on there is because when you add them all together to get the line 10, Roman numeral 10, and, which transfers to line one of page seven, that is your revenue control limit. That's the RCL, and that's why that number actually goes to page seven of eight on the budget sheet. And then we continue with the general budget limit. Now we're on page seven of eight, which is where the budget sheets are actually at. And so we start off with that first one, that revenue control limit, and then we're gonna add the override. That's the $18 million figure. And because we had a higher revenue control limit than the override being a percentage of that, makes that a higher number. Tuition, line 5A is tuition, and we turn that to actual. That was an estimate prior, and so now we've got an actual number for that. Line 8A was moving 104,000 of capital, of DSEG into capital. That DSEG had some capital needs and moved 104,000 of the DSEG budget into capital to take care of that. Line 8C is the carryforward. That's the number that we'd talked about at a previous meeting, that we had double-counted in expense, and so we, by not double-counting that, then our carryforward increases by 2.3 Line 8D was the dropout prevention. That number remained the same, but like before, if I omit those that remain the same, then I throw off the totals, so that's why I've included it. Line 8E is registered warrants, and again, that's from an estimate to an actual. Line 9B is the energy and water that we set aside, and that, that remains the same as from before. Line 10 is the Prop 123, and that is an estimate to an actual. And so that bottom figure, line 11, page seven of eight, is all the lines above it added up. And if we go back to this one, you can see that that's the same number that matches on our general budget line on line A1. So that takes us to the unrestricted capital. And the first line, 2A, is the DAA. That's an adjustment that ADE required that we make on their Budget 57 report. Line 2B is the, DAA is continuing to adjust that, and so that we get to line 2C, and that's the result of we're reducing that 227,000. Line 3B is the override, the capital outlay override. That remains the same. Line 8A is the DSEG capital. Here, we're adding it into the capital for where we had taken it out beforehand. And then we come down to the total, which is also line 12 of page seven, which is also line 11 of page eight, and gives us that total that carries over. Page eight of eight is the summary of the unrestricted capital. Line two is the ADE adjustment. Line three is the impact of that adjustment. That's why the difference is the same. Six is the actual expenditure for last year. That did not change. Line seven is the change from adding those up above it. Line eight is the interest. That did not change. And so line 11 is, from the previous, line 11 of page seven, eight, on that previous page, if we look at the, that bottom line, it, well, I went the wrong way. I'm sorry. That line 11, if we look at that line 11, it carries forward, and that's the line there, the same line that comes across. And then line 12, page eight of eight, is the total. And if we look at those totals, the 13, if you look at revision two, the 13, 635,088, and you compare that, again, back to line A2, you can see that those two match up to the changes that were on the capital. That gets us to the federal projects. Federal projects, when we originally adopted, those were estimates. We didn't have the final grants in yet, so this is a matter of changing estimates to actual as we got the final grants in. Line one is Title I. Line five is Title III. Line eight is IDEA Part B. Line nine is Johnson O'Malley, and line 12 is Vaquet. And same thing, if you look at those totals, the 13, the 1377, 219, and you run that back to here, you can see that the federal projects, that's that same line that matches, and the other numbers on the aggregate budget limit are simply additions of those. That takes us to the budgeted expenditures. The budgeted expenditures, that's in the lower right-hand corner, the 156, 684, 626. It matches the general budget limit. The increase of that $3 million, 33,000, is scattered out through those lines, and we place that proportional to where we're having the spending. However, we did not increase anybody's discretionary authority on budget, so we wanted to put it to where it would reflect how our spending was done, but people's individual budgets that they controlled to spend did not get increased. So in other words, no one's spending that $3 million, but we've simply accounted for it in the budget sheets. And for the capital, same thing. The bottom line number is that line right there on the 13 million, and it too, we scattered that as proportional to where our current spending was at, and also, we did not increase anybody's discretionary authority to spend it, that that will carry forward as well. And that, in a nutshell, is the budget revision that we're making. So relatively non-eventful, no big changes, certainly not changing our spending habits and what we've been, but just simply accounting for the adjustments that we've made from turning some things that were estimates to actual, and some changes that ADE required or that changed over the course of the year. Subject to your questions.
Board Member Kirby? Thank you. Thanks. Good presentation. I actually really followed that, so that was excellent. The ADM increase, did we, was that increase due to a scrub of any kind, or was it simply just an increase in ADM?
Just an increase in ADM.
So we didn't scrub it, or?
That's actual. Right, that's the actual ADM. That's our ADM on the, that's our 100-day ADM, actual. Now, will that change over the course of the year? ADE is constantly revising that, and so I would anticipate that you'll get some minor changes, you know, one or two, but really insignificant changes as ADE scrubs their records and reconciles with our records. That is an ongoing process.
We just, we had a, we, several years, several, maybe a decade ago, in the district, we really tried to scrub and get our ADM accurate, and I'm just wondering if that increase is just, just increased ADM, just organic, or did we somehow scrub our numbers and scrub, scrub our books that generated that increase? It sounds like it was organic.
It's just what came in. When you originally adopted, my understanding was that you actually had adopted a little high, and so when you did your first revision, you dropped that number to an estimate, and your estimate then was a little bit low, because now it's come back in a little bit higher.
Perfect.
So, yeah, but it's not a, it's not a manipulated number.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Board Member Hartman? Thank you, Dr. Virgil. This is really helpful and easy to follow. Couple, just a question for you. What were, what were the original dates of the original document, and then the revision one, and now we're at revision two in April or May?
The original, you proposed it on June 6, and you adopted it on June 20, the original, and then the, I don't have the date. The first revision was in October. I don't have the exact date in front of me, but it was in October. So it went from June to October to now in May.
June, October, May. Okay, and once again, you're saying that these are just really in, really where estimates become actual and not correcting it anywhere?
This one specifically, the one that you did in October, was mandated by ADE because of the 1.06% stipend and how to account for that. So that revision was mandated. Normally, when you adopt, usually in June, if ADE doesn't specifically tell you to do a revision, most districts don't do the revision, don't do one until May, and the statute says that you have to do it prior to May 15 is the last time that you can do a revision. And so if you don't have to do one, most districts don't, because it's, what's the point? You know, you do one in January, something's still gonna change, or you're gonna wanna do one in May, so why create extra work for yourself? Just do it all in May. So unless ADE specifically tells you to do one, most districts adopt it in June and revise it in May, and then that's the only two times they address it. I mean, you're free to adopt it anytime you want prior to May, so you could adopt it every month if you want, but it's, it kinda, what's the point unless you have a specific reason that you're trying to bring something in and show it?
Okay. So that October, there was a correction, but between October and today, those are really just updates as opposed to error corrections or anything like that?
Right. Well, they're, they were updates, but I don't wanna say there was no errors on it. For example, the using, the using the FY '17 audit amount instead of the FY '16 amount, that was an error. You know, had we used the '16 amount in the beginning, we wouldn't have changed that now. But, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a big document, it's got a lot of moving parts, and despite best effort, it's real easy to grab a wrong number, and that's why they allow us to revise it as we, you know, as we refine things and we, and we see them and catch them and we fix them.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Board Member Beckham?
I was wondering, oh, thank you also for the presentation. That was easy to understand. I was also wondering, do they require it to be revisited to kind of, I don't wanna use the word to, the word I'm thinking of, but I'm gonna use it again, to force the districts to really look at what they budgeted before, because you're going into budget season, and therefore you'll have a better idea of how to budget in June for the coming year, or does that really have nothing to do with it?
There are, normally, usually, normally, ADE will not force you to revise a budget unless you had erroneously adopted one that was too high. So if you adopted a budget that was higher than you should have had, they'll force you to lower it. But if you adopt a budget lower than you could adopt, it's not a cost to the state, and I suppose some districts in different financial times might do that on purpose because they wanna control their local tax rate. In recent times, with education funding being low anyway, you know, who wants to have less than they could have? But there's not a requirement to revise your budget because you estimated too low.
All right. Thank you.
They only force you when you've done too high.
And then, I wanna make sure that I understood this correctly, because this was part from a budget to an actual. It appears that the department that did the federal grants did an excellent job, because those were much higher than what we originally budgeted of what came in. Did I read that correctly?
Well, they made estimates, and I would, I haven't talked to them specifically on each of those grants. I, I would surmise that they, when they made their estimates, if they're gonna miss, they wanted to miss a little bit low, because they don't wanna bring in staff and get staff under contract, and then a grant comes in less than you thought it would be, and now how are you gonna pay the people?
So it's pretty typical that that happens, year after year?
Right.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Board Member Kravitz?
Could you go back to the federal projects slide? So we have an excess, I don't wanna use the word excess, but we have an addition. We have a million three to play around with. Is that correct? So we have a million three more from federal grants?
The budget has a million three more. Now, we'd have to ask individual grant managers at what point they realized what that number was gonna come in at, as to whether or not they went ahead and budgeted and waited until, and then we waited until we got the actual grant amendment to reflect it up here. You know, with the federal grant, sometimes you know what you're gonna get before you get it, but you don't have the paperwork to back it up yet, and, you know, so we'd have to ask the individual grant managers as to how they, how they did their estimate and planning versus getting the actual grant approved.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out, is, does this money continue to roll over, or it has to be used in a specific amount of time, or we get penalized, or?
I'll have to get the grant folks to answer that. Some of, I know some of them roll over to a limit that they can carry forward, and I don't know if all of them do or not. I know some of them do. I'm not, I'm not sure which ones, as far as what the grant, the terms of the grant are, as far as which ones roll over and to what amount they roll over.
But I know they're like, there's specific projects or programs for each.
Right. And each grant usually has its own set of rules that go with it.
Oh, okay. I just wanna make sure we're using all of what we've got, when we got it, and staffing with our.
Well, yes, I know that. I get the emails, and I watch the emails, and I know they're doing amendments and rolling those amounts as they get the amendments in. I get the emails where they're, where they're taking that and adjusting their expenditures to be able, right, because the last thing you wanna do is give money back.
Leave money on the table.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions?
Ooh. Cheers there.
Okay. Alrighty. So if there's no further questions from the board, Dr. Virgil, if you are done with your presentation, we have a public comment section, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just didn't know we had comment.
Yes. I'm assuming that this is the time. So this is the time for our public comment on this topic, on this agenda item, and this agenda item only. If we have anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment on this very exciting stuff, please go first up. All right. If not, we'll move on to the action item regarding this topic. Action item 4A, approval of adoption of fiscal year 2017-18 expenditure budget revision two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Beckham. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Board Member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right. We now move to our next agenda items. I make a motion that the governing board convene an executive session for the following items. 5A, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431-03A3, discussion or consultation with the governing board's attorney, attorneys for legal advice regarding statutory requirements, including instructional day, hours, minutes, and policy IC school year, and regarding policy ID school day. 5B, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A3 and 4, discussion or consultation with the governing board's attorneys for legal advice, and in order to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding teacher contract workdays and teacher leave. 5C, pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3 and A4, discussion or consultation with governing board's attorneys for legal advice, and in order to consider its position and instruct its attorney regarding the public body's position on assistant superintendent for personnel and specialized services. 5D, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A1, discussion or consideration of salary stipend for Ingleside Middle School principal. The employee has been provided written notice of this executive session in compliance with ARS Section 38-431.03A1. 5E, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A3 and A4, discussion or consultation with the governing board's attorneys for legal advice, and in order to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding the public body's position on salary stipend for Ingleside Middle School principal that is the subject of negotiations impending or contemplated litigation or settlement discussions conducted in order to avoid or resolve litigation. The attorneys may appear in person or telephonically. 5F, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A3 and A4, discussion or consultation with the governing board's attorneys for legal advice, and in order to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding the public body's position on unauthorized payments of stipends to female elementary school principal and director of curriculum. 5G, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A3 and A4, discussion or consultation with the governing board attorneys for legal advice, and in order to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding the public body's position on unauthorized leave payout to former director of employee relations and staffing in July 2016. 5H, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A1, discussion or consideration of applicants for interim acting superintendent. The applicants have been provided written notice of this executive session in compliance with ARS Section 38-431.03A1. And 5I, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A3 and 4, discussion or consultation with the governing board's attorneys for legal advice, and in order to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding applicants for interim acting superintendent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Our board will convene an executive session. All right. Great. Okay. We are back. Time is 8:08, and we are reconvened in our special meeting. We'll go directly to our first action item. 6A, approval policy IK-A grading assessment systems. Ms. Marshall?
Assistant A.D.S. President.
I'm sorry, I'm just pulling it up so that I can send it to you. You didn't send it over here, did you, Sander?
No.
Okay.
You want me to send it to you?
Um, if you think it'll be faster than me doing it.
Okay. You want the red line and the final?
Just the red line is great.
I hope this is, I hope is the right email address. See if it comes.
There it is. Thank you. Apologize for the delay, Madam President, members of the board. This is a second read of policy IK-A grading slash assessment systems. As you'll see from the red line, the proposed revisions are that we change the language to teachers keeping, we'll keep a careful record of the grades assigned to students. Formal reports to parents concerning student achievement will be made each semester in grade six through twelve and each quarter in grades K through five, and additional reports will be made when necessary. That is the change that is recommended by administration. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have. However, Debbie Ibarra is also here if you have substantive questions regarding the requested changes.
All right, question? Board Member Hartman?
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. I just had one question. The word written is excluded, so without that word, it just says formal reports to parents concerning student achievement will be made each semester and once a quarter for the younger grades. Does that allow for just, does that, does that leave space for saying it doesn't have to be written? You could just verbally talk to somebody?
Actually, you can do both, but the reason that we didn't put written in there is because it's all computerized. So the report cards now are very computerized, the progress reports are computerized. They do go in there and they write things, but it's just, if it's a formal grading assessment that we're talking about, it's all computerized, so nothing is handwritten. Like when I was a principal or I was a teacher, I used to have to go in there and handwrite my grades in and put everything in. Now it's all computerized, so that's why we took written out.
So I guess you could put documented, but if you're, that's what's inferred and you don't think there's a, I mean, if it's computerized, it's computerized, but if you think there's room for teachers to think about it differently?
The, the teachers actually, I'm sorry, Madam President, Board Member, it's actually the teachers have a place for comments and so they do do go in there and put comments into the written area. If you're asking, do we want to put the written in? We just left it off because teachers just go in there and type everything anymore. That help?
Oh, yeah, it does. I just wanted to understand with that, what it was intended to mean.
Board Member Kirby?
So is this, thank you, is this policy addressing report cards?
Yes.
So really, it's, this is the policy that teachers are held accountable to, to issue report cards?
Correct. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Board Member Beckham?
Thank you for staying so late to answer these questions because I do have some questions and I asked you some today, so thank you for your timely response. I want to really support this policy because as it reads, it seems like it makes sense, especially the reason that was given, which was, and I want to confirm that I heard that correctly, that the reason behind the move to a quarterly basis for elementary schools was to better align to the curriculum mapping and benchmarking?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so that's not the issue here, but I did receive some feedback that I found very interesting and something I think maybe is worth exploring further. And that was, is, part of it goes to what is the definition of formal report? Because that could be anything, right? So is there another place which actually defines formal report? And when I asked that question, it was that it is the report cards that we have today. So for elementary school in which is, which, in which this is being amended for, those are a standards-based tool, correct?
Method.
And so what, the feedback that I started hearing, which I think is very important, is that that, if that is, which is not described here, is going to be the tool, that that causes the elementary schools and teachers some very large challenges that maybe have not been explored and discussed. And so I had, and I had asked if there had been any feedback that you had gotten and you hadn't gotten, I guess, any feedback in that way. So since I have gotten some feedback, I'm wondering if it is something that we should explore and should be maybe, since this isn't something that has to be approved today, there's no timeline.
Well, can I ask a question?
If, if I'm wrong, if there isn't a timeline, is that something that would be important to do?
Can I ask a question on that? Is it, is it the timing that's a challenge or is it the, the standards-based report card itself that's a challenge?
It's not that it's the standards-based, it's that, as I understand it, and I'm, and you please, because you'll understand, but I'm not the educator here, the tool that is used for elementary schools is very, very detailed and it is based upon the standards and so, and there's a matrix, if you will, they give numbers one, two, and three. And by shortening that term, it makes it, and using that same tool instead of maybe a progress report every quarter, it makes it very difficult to really assure what that improvement in progress is and if we are accurately reporting student achievement and it makes it more difficult for the parents to understand also.
This isn't new.
So it's like you're taking a, a tool that's used for the trisemester and then trying to use it for the quarterly basis and it doesn't, they, they don't mix real well.
They don't mix.
So has that been brought up and how has that been addressed?
It has. President Perleberg, Board Member Beckman, it, Beckham has been addressed with the principals. From the history that I have learned here was several years back, they created the standard-based assessment report card. I learned more that it had never been completed, that it was an original group that made, that started this process, but the intentions were to go back and, and make it more aligned with everything that, that's going on. Come forward to this school year where we now have curriculum maps and we now have the state standards, we have our benchmarks, everything's at a quarter base. The report card, there was no possible way at this time in speaking to the principals that we could go back and change the report card because that is something that we couldn't do, that is something a committee needs to do. So the principals were in agreement along with curriculum department that we, if we could get it to change to quarterly, then we'd have a basis of where we need to go. We could go back and look at the standards, we could go back and look at the curriculum maps, we could go back and look at our benchmarks and we could work on fixing the report card for this year and then the next year, everything would be perfectly aligned. It's just right now because we're on the nine-week system instead of the, I'm sorry, the twelve-week system instead of the nine-week system, we can't align our report cards. Our report cards are very complex and there is, there's a place where people wrote state standards in there and then they also added Scottsdale standards on there. So the teachers are very busy filling out those report cards and talking to the principals, they feel that it would be much better if we changed the system and then go back and create the committee, if not the same people, but other people on it and fix the report card. There was just no way because that's about a year-long process to come in and fix a report card. You don't want to just, because we made the decision, fix it that quickly.
So with all due respect, that seems a little backwards. It seems like you should go in and fix the tool that you're going to be using and have that ready and then you change the policy. Because if you don't, you are forcing the elementary schools then to use a tool that is not made for a quarterly basis.
So, you're right, but right now the report card doesn't agree with the benchmarks or the curriculum maps for next year either. So we are going on a basis of what do we do the most around here? We do the curriculum apps and we do benchmark testing. So if we have the data on all of that and then we go back and we look at this report card, the, the teachers were finished, the students were finishing the benchmarks at the quarter base, but yet we didn't do report cards until three weeks later, so they didn't have an actual where your child actually was based on a benchmark. So that's where they were asking and we, when we had this discussion with the principals, I asked them, what do you think is best for right now that we do? And they said, we need to change report cards. We need to change them to be quarterly and then we go back and we fix the report card. Because every, it's almost seemed like there were four different report cards in this district, just even at the elementary. The traditional has their report card and then we have the, the general one and then we have a K eight report card and we, it was just got to be cumbersome where you, we're not looking at just one clean-cut report card. Everybody created their own report cards in, in the district. So they said, let's, first, let's change it to quarter and then let's fix the report card. And that was coming from the principals.
So I have to, with all due respect, that still seems backwards then because you're now saying we're, everybody still is going to be giving these different report cards at all these different levels. Now we're just going to be taking something that's not made for quarterly and making them quarterly. Why wouldn't we go back and either if, if the idea is to standardize these or at least to make the formal report that we're going to have fit before we do the quarterly? Because we're not forced to do quarterly.
No, no.
Correct. So that's just, I, my view.
We're, we're not, we're just trying to align it with the curriculum apps and with the benchmarks.
Well, I, I'm going to have, from what, talking with the feedback that I got, I, and it's, it seems backwards. So until that, I would think I would have difficulties.
And, and I did have a discussion with the principal, I believe, that you spoke to. She called me and we talked about that and I said, give me some history because you voted that, for us to do this. And she said, the problem was is we never went back and fixed the report card. And that's really what the problem was. We never went back. We made a template and everybody kept adding to it, but we never went back and adjusted it to what we needed in this district. And I said, what do you think about, because you voted on this, all the principals voted to do this? And she said, I agree we need to do this, it's just going to be difficult for us at first to get, because the report cards are not aligned with, with the quarterly.
So then what, what positive, it's, what's the positive to come out of forcing this quarterly policy without fixing the report cards first?
I think the positive on that is the fact that when you go to sit down and you do parent conferences, you will have your benchmarks and you will have your, your curriculum maps that said this night, this first quarter, this is what we were supposed to teach and your child in, in math was supposed to do ABC and this is what they did on ABC based on, based on the standards and the curriculum maps. Now, the report card isn't aligned to that. We're working on the report card, we're going to have that fixed, but right now I can actually give you an actual assessment of where your child is at the quarter, not three weeks later.
But that's different from what you dealt, because you just said that, that the formal report card that we have in elementary is standardized based, it's not based on the benchmarking. So therefore, how are you, you are going to be changing that report then, otherwise you're not going to be able to tell the parent what progress they're going to be able to be able to make, they've made at that point. And I guess part of that is that two, that is, that you give a number, is that true? That you give a number?
Mm-hmm.
And?
They get a one, two, three, or four.
Four. And that two is so broad that it, it doesn't allow, um, maybe a real progress report. Is, is that a true statement or not? Am I mixing up kind of what I've heard?
I think you're mixing.
Yeah. Board Member Kirby?
So some history that I have is that parents have never really understood the one, two, three, four, standards-based report card. And maybe it's because it doesn't really make sense to begin with. I've heard what you're hearing for years, so this isn't a new concern. My question, in this year that we're going to take to write, rewrite the report card, is that, is it the intent that the benchmarks could be the formal reports themselves and that the, the report card, as broken as it is, goes by the wayside for a year?
I wouldn't want to answer that without meeting with the curriculum committee and say that that is our intentions. It can be used as a, as a marking point, it can be used as one of not, we don't want to use them as grades because I think it's really important for everyone to understand that the benchmarks are from one semester, one nine, or one quarter to the next quarter, the next quarter you build, they're building blocks. So the first quarter, the students might not have been introduced to that, but they have had a small introduction, but they haven't fully understood it. They're going to be tested on it. Benchmarks are more for teachers' use, for them to actually sit there and say, I didn't teach what I, or I taught this maybe not the wrong way, or I didn't spend enough time on geometry when second grade, when that's when I should have. I didn't realize I was supposed, because that's what we're hearing from teachers now. I didn't know I was supposed to teach that because we didn't have the curriculum maps completed. With the curriculum maps now, it's going to actually align it where the students come in, the teachers have taught everything they were supposed to do that first quarter and then the students come back and they grade the students on the benchmark and then the teacher can look down and go, why is my students not getting this? Or why did this group, why did my second grade class next to me blow it off the charts?
So if I can jump in, I think I can understand the teacher's heartburn on this because we're, we're admitting that we have a broken report card and now we're asking them to do it four times instead of three times a year. So we're asking them to suffer through a broken report card process yet one more time next year. I think that may be where the heartburn's coming in.
I think that's.
And I, I don't, if that's what we're asking them to do, I would question why.
I, I think the whole point behind it is we have the curriculum maps now that are aligned and they are, they are actually on quarters. They are not on, on the, the original grading system that we had here. And so the whole point was if I'm a teacher and I'm being given my curriculum maps and I'm being told for this first quarter, here's everything you're supposed to introduce to the students, here's where you're supposed to do your CFAs on so we know where the students are academically, and at the end of that quarter, you're going to be able to do a benchmark to see if everything that you introduced, if they have it. What happens though at the end of that quarter is our report card does not match it. Our report card didn't really match anything right now. It was kind of just with the one, two, three, four, with the standard-based grading. Teachers also weren't sure, what does a four really look like? What, what does that mean?
Sorry to interrupt you, but is it going to match on August first?
Oh, absolutely not because we haven't fixed it.
That's the point is, so, I mean, I hear you. I, I hear the quarterly, the benchmarks, the curriculum maps, that, those three things, the report card on a quarter basis, the curriculum maps and the benchmarks are all, all quarterly. The report cards over here are somewhere else and doesn't tie to any of these three things. So what we're asking teachers to do now is instead of jump through this hoop three times a year, now they're to have to jump through the hoop four times a year. We're, we're putting extra work on the teachers for something that doesn't make sense. Does that? So that's why I asked, is it possible to just have the, the formal reports to the parents be the curriculum maps and the benchmarks?
That, that I don't know. I don't know if we can pull something up because that would be creating something and I believe we could do that, but I don't want to answer for the curriculum department.
Something you mentioned too though, which kind of made me question it, is that you said the benchmarks really for the teachers. So you're still doing the benchmarks and that's to make sure that the teacher is staying on schedule. You've still then could do the quarter or the trisemester report for this next coming up year as you get the committee together and get the teachers together to really examine and come up with a better tool maybe for a quarterly report so that this then policy gets implemented next year. It's just possible?
Well, if I can jump in, because I mean, I'm hearing both sides definitely. It's not surprising to me that they don't like that report card. But at the same time, a lot of work has gone into the curriculum maps and, and the benchmarks and everything and the standardized, making sure that that's all working and that is the direction we're going. We don't want to dismantle that or slow that down or confuse that at all.
We're not talking about.
I'm not hearing that either. But what I'm hearing you say is that keeping the report cards in the trimester is difficult because everything else is quarterly and then they're trying to, three weeks later, fill out a report card that is. And then they're trying to, three weeks later, fill out a report card that is, is it back here or is it here? That's, that's the problem. I'm going to throw out maybe another solution. I mean, you said it takes a year to address a report card. Is there any sort of, um, just adjustments to the current report card that could make it easier for teachers? I'm just throwing that out there, but that, that's full of, sorry.
Okay. Madam, I sent a number to the board. The board, uh, report card does not appear in the policy that you're looking at. What it does appear is, um, the grading system will be kept and the formal reports to the parents, which are very, very important. They need to know how students are doing, um, often, basically. So it doesn't really say anything about the report card. But I would, the benchmarks are a diagnostic for the teachers, but also for us, for the district, we want to make sure that the students are growing for each quarter and, you know, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. They're very, very important for us. And the curriculum maps are, um, all the standards per grade level or content area at the high school and middle school levels. And what the pacing guides are of the curriculum maps, they're guides for the teachers to know how long they have to, to teach this certain amount of standards per quarter. So they're really, really important. They align to the benchmarks, so this is not a surprise. If they follow the guiding maps or curriculum maps, they will do well on the benchmark. However, if they don't, we just need to adjust that and say, okay, well, I didn't teach this well, or the kids did not learn well, or something. But right now, professionally speaking, those two, I mean, not without looking at the, those two are really, really important. I suggest that the report cards can be used, uh, in conjunction when, when they can. But these two measurements will help the parents know more, the benchmarks will help parents know more than apparently the report cards, which are not aligned to the benchmarks.
But when I ask what the formal report was, the formal report is the elementary school standard-based report card. So that would be fine if that's what it meant. But that is not how it's being defined.
Not right now, it isn't.
Right.
The report cards are incredible, like I stated earlier, they're incredibly difficult. And it takes a lot of time for the teachers to go in there and put their grades in, not only because they have the state standards, but because they have the Scottsdale standards. I think you need to actually, and that's what they've called them when they've introduced them to me. And I know that I sent those to you today. There's just a lot to fill out, whereas if you had a basic formal report that said, reading, this is what your child is doing, math, this is what your child's doing, science, social studies, art, P E. And when you have those parent meetings and you have the parent conferences and you sit down and say, your child has a three, but this is why, this is what it looks like. It's those conversations that they're having verbally during those parent conferences that they're having. When you do that first one in October, the parent gets an understanding of what that part, report card means and what that three and what that two and what that four, if they get a four or one, looks like, the reasoning behind it. If they were to turn around and get a report card again at Christmas time, the teachers have the ability to write in there, if it was just those five areas or what have you, and write in a statement, this is why your child received this, or here's the portfolio being sent home regarding, based on what your child has received. Benchmarks should never be averaged into a report card. They are nothing more than a tool for you to be able to say, this child is missing these areas. I, as a classroom teacher, need to work to help that child improve in that area. But they shouldn't be given a, a grade on a report card for that.
Board Member Hartman.
So what I'm recalling from past years in this conversation, it's the difference between formative and summative information, right? Benchmarks being formative and
Correct.
Formal reporting being more summative. I guess I'm getting a little bit less comfortable with this conversation because formal reports, I thought, sounded kind of vague. And then I understood, no, it's, it means report card and it means something. But now what I'm hearing is, what I'm hearing you describe is, it's back to being vague. It sounds like it's giving flexibility for teachers to meet with parents to just talk about reading and writing and math or?
No, and I apologize if that's the way that it's came across. What I was referring to were the benchmarks. A benchmark is a tool. It is not the final grade on
Being the formative.
Correct. And so the teacher gives out assignments throughout the whole, let's say, we're at a quarter. Or, so they give out grades the whole quarter, they should be able to go look at it and say, the child has a three, has a two, has a three, has a two. Never average those grades, but where does that child end up at the end? And that's the grade that should go on the report card. But the parent that, that comes in, if I was the parent, I would want the teacher to be able to explain that to me and say, why my child got a two when they have a three and a four and a two and a one or, and a two? Why they didn't average those grades? Because you don't average assess, uh, standard-based report cards. You actually have the final grade. But I keep referring back as you don't use that benchmark as a grade within your report card. That is nothing more than another tool. Did that help? Or did that confuse you even more?
No, I'm not confused on it at all, other than I'm not exactly sure we have agreement on what a report card is. I think, I think you all know what the report cards look like. I still go back to my question of, is there a way? Because, I mean, I hear, I hear the problem there. They, everybody agrees, they're bad and they're difficult and those aren't two good things. So is there a way? I mean, I guess a year-long committee in some way is necessary, but is there a way for next year to use the same record part, report card, but modified to make it simpler and at least a little more in line with the curriculum maps? I, I, I mean?
I would be thrilled to do that. I, I wasn't given the go-ahead this year to do that. And I would be thrilled to sit down with the curriculum committee and look at the report card. And, and I would love to get teachers involved in this and sit down and say, is there a way we can do that, maybe perhaps over the summer? So when we come back, the teachers have a working, um, copy of something.
And maybe it's understood. It, it's, it's simplified, it's not perfect, it, it's a work in progress, but we recognize doing it one more time a year, it just needed to be easier. Is that?
I think that's workable, very workable.
Board Member Kirby.
So who's, who's, um, which department? Is it the curriculum department that's really wanting this language change? I don't think it's the teachers. Um, I'm just trying to, like, where is the urgency coming from?
Well, I think it's been a year long of us talking about the report card in itself. The report card, the way it works now is not, keep, the elementary, just the K five, is not able to get on parent view where the parents can actually look at it at the way that it's written right now. So that's what started the conversation in August. So the conversation went from there is, why can't they? Why can't it be easy for parents? Because parents should be able to get on parent view, be able to see where their child is the whole school year. And the comment kept coming back, it's the way it's written. There, it, there is just no way because it averages out a grade and you can't average out a grade. But a parent should be able to get on parent view and get a snapshot immediately by pulling it up and seeing where their child is. It can be done. I've seen it done. My own children have had a report card that I've been able to put on parent view and go, okay, I know where you're at and why are you missing these assignments? You know, that was a conversation at my house. But we don't have the ability to put the actual report card we're using right now for parent view to be able to be parent-friendly nor student-friendly at this moment. So I, I think I went off of your question. Could you ask?
Yeah, no, my question is, what depart, is it the curriculum department that's really pushing?
No, it, it's, it's the conversation that we, I started with. It was the principals and myself that started this. And then they went back and talked to teachers. And then we brought it to the curriculum committee and the curriculum committee sat down with us and said, we would love for this to be aligned with what we're doing. So can, but first, we have to change the language because we can't change it unless we change the language.
Okay, okay. That, that, that helps.
But I don't understand that. How, why wouldn't you develop and propose the new and have the quarterly reports and then change it? Because if you change it prior to, you've got a year of having a, and you've said it, a report card that is going, that isn't going to match what you're trying to align it to, which is quarterly benchmarks.
Well, it sounds like the policy has to drive
But why?
The card.
The policy has to drive the cart, but also what's really driving the cart is all the work that's been done behind the scenes for the curriculum maps, the standard, for, for, for benchmarks, right? Benchmarks matching up with the standards, that's what's really driving this all.
But that's not changing. That's already going to be done, no matter what, correct?
It's going to be done, but this
Whether this policy changes or not, that's still happening, as I understand.
But, but then their assessments and grading won't be aligned with, with all the work they've been doing for the curriculum maps and, and the
But it's still not going to be aligned because you don't have a tool in which to accurately show that progress. So for a year, it's still not even going to be aligned.
We don't, we don't have a tool right now, but if you approve this tonight, I'm more than positive, we will get a committee this summer together and we will have a tool by beginning of the school year.
Board Member Hartman.
I think of it this way, Ms. Beckham. This policy will get us in the right direction and next year, we'll be able to add the word useful. We'll just have formal reports for now. I mean, yeah, true, kind of what you're hearing.
I still, first, I won't be able to support a policy that isn't useful. So that's okay.
But you already are.
You're already, yeah. That's what I'm hearing is what we have right now is already not useful.
It's, it's almost like you want to hold on to a tool that we already know is not useful.
This is, this is what
Kind of stop work that's been done for years.
And what I'm hearing is that this is from what Board Member Kravitz weighed in on. Our job is to set the direction. And by approving this policy change, we are therefore setting the direction of where we want everything else to fall into line. I would challenge you and, and the team that, I mean, on the one hand, we probably have gone for six or seven years with these standard-based report cards that nobody really has understood. So what's another year? But, um, that makes, I mean, that's disappointing that we've gone that long as a district and we shouldn't go another year. So I would challenge the team to move quicker than a year. It shouldn't. And don't overthink this. This is elementary, Kate, I mean, don't overthink it. I don't, and I wouldn't even start with the whole standards-based report card, ask that question, just.
I, I have to wonder, there's got to be a template out there that somebody else is using that maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I, I, I haven't seen an online report card in a while, but
There should be. I mean, that's for a different discussion.
If there's a paper one from like, that we used to use back in the dark ages, I, I mean, I don't even know.
It's just all about getting the buy-in
Yeah.
And the training. And that's really, the, the answer should be pretty obvious out there. You can go poll a couple districts. Then it's all about just bringing people along and getting people trained and rolling. And I think that can be done much quicker than a year.
I, I would agree. We could get it done more than a year. We were just
I'd agree.
But it already took a year.
Well, I think
Board Member Hartman.
Well, I think you're hearing some direction from the board that we'd like to see an accelerated process so this becomes a useful
Yeah.
Report card to our parents and our students. So if you can come back and maybe define what accelerated process looks like
Okay.
Without compromising
I would be happy to.
Right? With the quality of it, that would be, I think, something we'd all be interested in.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So at this time, um, I will make a motion that the governing board approve policy IKA as presented this evening. Do I have a second?
Begrudgingly second.
Gets us in the right direction. Thank you, Board Member Hartman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion passes four, one. Thank you. All right, we move on to our next action item, six B, suspension of governing board policy BGB regarding policy adoption for purposes of current board meeting.
Any other, Ms. Marshall, who's going to present?
Madam President, members of the board, uh, as you know very well, policy BGB regarding policy adoption, uh, normally requires two reads of a policy before adoption. I am recommending that you suspend that usual requirement to allow you to adopt the policies that I'm going to present to you next, which are policy IC the school year regarding, uh, the hundred and eighty days and the instructional minutes, as well as policy ID school day. I will answer any questions about suspension of BGB first. And if there are none, I would recommend you vote to waive that.
I guess just to clarify, this is just a suspension for tonight's agenda items, obviously.
Yes, just for the two policies that follow on the agenda.
Clarifying.
Yes.
Be obvious. Okay.
So if you're ready for a motion, I move that we suspend board policy BGB regarding policy adoption for purposes of tonight's board meeting, specifically policies IC and ID.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The next policy I have for your consideration is revision to policy IC school year. We, we talked actually briefly about this at our last meeting. Uh, the recommendation is to bring this policy into alignment with the statute. And it reads, the school year shall not be less than one hundred and eighty instructional days, which is what we already had in policy. The recommendation is to add the following language in red, or an equivalent number of minutes of instruction per school year based on a different number of days of instruction approved by the school district governing board.
All right. Any questions or comments?
And we, oh, sorry. Board Member Kirby? And we are changing this policy to reflect the state statute.
Yes.
And which state statute is that?
That is, uh, the first one listed there, fifteen, three, forty-one point oh one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
A motion for the approval of revision to governing board policy IC regarding the school year.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Beckham, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The next policy is ID school day. Uh, the language in black, we already had. The language in red is what we are recommending adding. And that language is, in the event that the district schools excuse students from school attendance in the event of the following, widespread illness for a period of three consecutive days or more, adverse weather conditions for three consecutive days or more, concerted refusal by students to attend classes for any period of three consecutive days or more, threats of violence, uh, situations affecting the safety of persons on property resulting from fire, flooding, et cetera. Um, and under those conditions, the district shall apply to the ADE for authorization for the school closure. As with the previous policy, these, uh, the red line here aligns with the recommended Arizona School Boards Association, uh, policy. And I will take any questions about that.
Board Member Kirby?
And does this tie to a state statute or just to the as of a recommendation?
Uh, I believe it's in statutes. The one that's in red is eight oh six B, but I'd have to look to be sure that that's the one, but yes.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
State statutes only.
Do you have a motion?
All, um, uh, move to approve the revision to the governing board policy ID regarding, regarding school day.
Board Member Rebecca, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. All right.
Thank you.
At this, thank you. At this time, I'm going to make a motion that we table until the May fifteenth, meet um, meeting, action item, six E, approval of revised academic calendar to reflect corrected number of instructional days and instructional hours, and approval of certification to ADE regarding same.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. We then move to item six F, approval of revised work calendar. Ms. Siegel will join us.
Madam President, members of the board, my name's Susan Siegel. I've been asked to address the language of the Scottsdale Unified School District Teacher Employment Contracts for 2017-2018 with respect to contractual obligations to work, of the teachers, to work 186 days. This inquiry arises from the recent school closures due to a walkout that we were experiencing statewide. On March twenty-first of 2017, the governing board, you adopted a benefit package with a two percent raise for teachers and specifically discussed the number of workdays when, when discussion of the additional, also the additional three professional development days. When the contract was issued on March twenty-eighth, it was contemplated that teachers would work 186 days. This was made clear in a memorandum from the district's Human Resources Department. That was communicated through email. The Arizona Constitution, Article nine, section seven, it's also clause, called the gift clause, states the following, "Neither the state nor any county, city, town, municipality, or other subdivision of the state, your political subdivision, shall ever give or loan its credit in the aid of or make a donation or grant by subsidy or otherwise to any individual or association or corporation." It goes on, but what the gist of this provision is to forbid a public entity such as a school district from giving a gift of its property to any person or company or shareholder. Paying teachers their current salary requires that they work 186 days. Of course, if a teacher uses accrued leave for any of these days, it's considered to be a day worked. Alternatively, teacher salaries can be deducted by using the per diem amount for days that they did not work or take leave of those days. Based upon that fact, because the salary schedule contemplated work for 186 days, we are recommending that your contract, I'm sorry, that your workday calendar, your number of work days worked, be extended to cover the five days that the district was closed.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you, Ms. Siegel. Can you please distinguish for the record and clarity for those who are watching and will watch, the difference between the work calendar and the student calendar?
Yes, and thank you for asking that question, because they're often confused. They are somewhat related, because when teachers are here to work, the students are here as well, most of the time, except for professional development. But the statute for the students that talks about what is a full-time equivalent, you will probably have on your next meeting. And that talks about numbers of minutes or days. It gives you different criteria to meet the full-time equivalent or part-time equivalent definitions of statutes. That's completely different from the contractual obligation that teachers, as your employees, entered into, contemplated by a per diem that's calculated out, so it equals to 186 days. So let me just back up. So, for example, you can have a requirement that teachers teach, or that students go to school for the equivalent of 180 days or an equivalent number of hours. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the teacher contracts are limited to that. You have professional development days, you have the days when school opens and students aren't here yet, you have other types of activities that other districts have that expand the number of days that a teacher is on duty and working.
So as a follow-up, have we communicated to families that we are not extending the student calendar?
Madam President, we have.
Okay, so this action tonight does not change what we've already communicated, that the student calendar will not be extended.
Correct.
It's just that the workdays for the teacher, it's too separate.
Yes, Miss Kirby, thank you. Thank you, I want to, I'll reiterate it also. This has no effect on the student calendar. That's a separate issue. Because of the alternative tests that you, that the statute allows, that you covered in IC, but also the statute allows, you can meet those requirements without the students having to attend additional days. The other is a contractual issue.
Thank you.
Board Member Beckham? Since we don't have a calendar up and I don't know if, why don't we just state the days? So May twenty-fourth will be the last day for students, according to this calendar that you're proposing, correct?
According to the calendar, and Dr. Fuller, may I have that?
Yes, of course, excuse me.
And then I just, do you want to just read what days the teachers will be asked to work?
And let me kind of tie that to the gift clause. What that basically, it's a constitutional provision. What it basically does is to ensure that a government entity, such as a school district, is paying money in exchange for value. And I'm going to talk a little bit about, you know, just a little bit about meaningful work. But in any event, you were closed, the district was closed April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, April thirtieth, and May first and second. You were open as a workday the next day. So what would be added on as teacher makeup days would be, I'm sorry, last day of classes would be May twenty-fourth, teacher makeup day, May twenty-fifth. Of course, Memorial Day is May twenty-eighth. Teacher makeup days, again, May twenty-ninth to thirty-first, and another makeup day on June first. And again, I would reiterate that, of course, a teacher could use his or her leave bank to, if they wanted to call in and use that, because there will be no students here. The other part, and I want to reiterate, is that these days are required in the Constitution to be meaningful days, meaningful workdays.
Board Member Kravitz?
Would you just share for the public or anybody who may be listening or following up on this meeting about the contract language and you referred to fifteen dash eight oh one in a memo that you sent to us, which I think-
Yes, the contracts, right. First of all, understand that the contracts track your calendar. And so it says pursuant to ARS fifteen eight oh one, "The contract year for the said employee shall be coterminous with the official calendar adopted by the governing board." There's some other language there. But for the purposes of this, it will track what your calendar, your work calendar is. And that's why tonight you are making it clear what your work calendar is. Except that if an emergency requires the closing of a school, the period of this contract shall be extended by the number of days necessary to satisfy the requirements pursuant to fifteen nine oh one. Well, you're doing more than that, in that you are also satisfying the gift clause by extending the calendar to accommodate for the days when the school was closed and the teachers were not working.
Thank you. Oh, Dr. Fuller, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you very much, Ms. Siegel, for spending all this time with us. Can you clarify, on May third, we had a workday and two of our schools were open, what would those teachers do in this case? Please.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. And I think we've also, I've also discussed with Ms. Marshall, addressing this more fully at another board meeting. But the days you were, the one day you were open, I think that was May third. You had two schools that were open, those teachers worked. The other days, the other schools, the other teachers at other schools were either, were to call in for leave, or of course, if they didn't call in, they would be considered not there, and it would be docked.
Thank you.
And I thank you, Ms. Marshall, for helping with the audio visual here.
But wait a minute.
Board Member Kirby?
I was trying, I was watching, and so on the May third, it was a workday. So some teachers may have called in for leave. We know at two schools, teachers actually physically conducted class.
Right.
But couldn't it also be possible that at the other schools, teachers showed up for work even though the students weren't there?
Correct.
Okay.
And I assume that their principals or whoever takes accounting for teachers would have known that, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be docked.
Right, okay.
Pay or annual leave wouldn't have been deducted. I don't, you call it general leave, I believe.
And so for, those are the categories. So the last category is a teacher who did not call in for leave and who did not show up for work at their assigned school is, that's what we're-
I believe, to answer your question, I believe Dr. Fuller has explained in another setting that the teachers knew that if they didn't call in to take leave, or they didn't show up to work on that day, they would be docked.
Okay, thank you. And then one last thing, if we can, just for the record, the last day where it says June first, we want to add the language, "teacher makeup day," so that we-
Right.
We're clarified that day is a workday as well.
So to be consistent with what you have there for May twenty-fifth, May twenty-ninth to thirty-first, and you would also make June first reflect teacher makeup day.
Thank you. You'll make a judgment. Board Member Hartman?
Thank you, Ms. Siegel. This question, comment is actually for Dr. Fuller. Through this process, through being contacted by teachers, we became aware that there originally was some teacher training that was actually scheduled on May thirtieth, thirty-first, and June first. When the walkout occurred and it became unclear as to when the end of the school year was, my understanding is we had to cancel that because there was financial commitment to it and we weren't sure. My understanding is there was two to three hundred teachers that were looking forward to this training. So, and we've talked about this, but I think it's just worth mentioning, since teachers may be listening, that you or Dr. Nance will be addressing that, and if it's something that's still desired, we'll figure out how to get it into the next calendar year.
You are correct, Mrs. Hartman, and I will not only do that, I will confirm that all of the teachers were notified, and we will definitely see how we can offer this opportunity next year for the teachers who were interested this year.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, so at this time, I'll make a motion that the governing board approve the revised work calendar as discussed, and I hate to say amended, because I guess we're not really amending the calendar, but with the amended language on the calendar, I make a motion that we approve. Shall I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, and so at this time, I make a motion that we table for a future meeting to be determined the approval of leave payout for director of payroll for the 2017-18 school year item, sorry, six G. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. That gets us to the next item, possible action on stipend for Ingleside Middle School principal for the 2017-18 school year. I am happy to make, I'm having to make a motion for council to proceed as directed in executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Beckham, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. And that gets us to six I, waiving attorney-client privilege regarding the outside council report on unauthorized stipends. I make a motion that we waive such privilege. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. That opens us up for information discussion item seven A, outside council report on unauthorized stipends.
Just a second.
Oh, sorry, Allison, second, Alice. Who's second? I was moving fast. Do I get a better rate at the motel down the street if I don't come there for less than twelve hours? Because I'm going to the bus breakfast.
Madam President, members of the board, in the spring of this year, just several months ago, it came to the district's attention that there had been some stipends, or we can also call them supplemental contracts, but when I use the term stipend, that's what I'm talking about, that were paid to three administrators for different, for a variety of reasons and under a different circumstances. Those three administrators are Dr. Thumann, Ms. Alexis Cruz Freeman, and Michael Roberts. I will go through the factual findings so that, to give you some of the background and to what we found in our investigation. Dr. Thumann has worked for the district since August first of two thousand and seven. He holds a doctorate in business administration, which entitles him to a $3,000 annual stipend pursuant to the district administrative handbook. On March twelfth of 2012, he was promoted to the position of Executive Director of Community Education and Online Instruction. In school year fifteen sixteen, Dr. Thumann's salary in his position was $100,000, $100,189 exclusive of his doctoral stipend. We are not talking about his doctoral stipend in this regard. And by the way, the doctoral stipend is a part of the administrative handbook. It is set out there clearly that any person who has received a doctorate gets an annual stipend of $3,000. In March of 2016, then superintendent of the district, Dr. Denise Birdwell, called Dr. Thumann from Hawaii during the district's spring break and asked him to accept a transfer from his executive director position to Ingleside Middle School as principal. From the investigation, he accepted it. He felt that for a variety of reasons, it was an important change, transfer for him to make. But he also asked Dr. Birdwell about the salary, because he was being paid more than what the normal, the norm was for a middle school principal. Dr. Birdwell responded and told him, and this was substantiated in the first contract, first year of a contract as the Ingleside Middle School principal, Dr. Birdwell responded, "We'll hold your salary in place, so you won't be penalized by virtue of you going from being a director that's part of the superintendent's leadership team to being a principal." He did forfeit some benefits by virtue of going from the leadership team to the principal of Ingleside. For example, he forfeited some insurance benefits that the leadership team is entitled to, that he, when he transferred to being principal, he lost. He agreed for a variety of reasons. He went to Ingleside for the school year sixteen seventeen. His contract said, it was revised once to reflect an increase, but it's, the ultimate salary he was going to get was $105,000, $105,302, pardon me. And that is roughly, that is equivalent to what these other principals were making, plus, if you take what he was making as executive, or as a director, and you subtract what other principals were making, that difference was $7,239. That contract was approved under the $105,000 amount. It was reflected what he understood to be, he understood to be the agreement that Dr. Birdwell had made with him and told him would be the agreement in place for two years in order to encourage him and induce him to take the position at Ingleside. For school year seventeen eighteen, the arrangement changed, although the amount of the salary did not. Instead of being paid a salary of $105,000, he was offered a contract for $98,063. He was told by administration that the difference would be made up in the form of a stipend. He figured that since he had been paid the $105,000 the year before, that this was, how this was going to be done, in other words, different form, but the same result of $105,000. The, this spring, the district was, found out that the stipend had never been approved by the governing board. Under the applicable statutes, only the governing- by the governing board. Under the applicable statutes, only the governing board can approve a stipend. He found out about it. We've had meetings with him. You've authorized us to go forward and negotiate with him, but that, those are the facts. He did rely upon representations of the then-district superintendent and also the district assistant superintendent in charge of human relations, who also verified that was the arrangement. That's all I have at this point. The other two individuals relates to doctoral stipends that were given to them. Both individuals are working on their doctorates. One is Mr. Roberts, Michael Roberts. He is currently the Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction here at the district. Prior to joining the district this year, he was a principal of a school in Oregon. He never stopped, signed the supplemental contract form. He didn't realize he was getting more money. Actually, for whatever reason, he has, his amounts of his, the gross amount of his contract in Oregon and his contract here were the same, but he was actually getting less here in Arizona. And he just didn't realize that somehow that less was, should have been lesser by the $3,000. He is, the district stopped paying his stipend on April 19th, and he began paying back the district on the same date. And he continues to pay back the district. Ms. Cruz-Freeman is starting to work for the district again this current school year in the position of principal of Pima Elementary. Prior to that time, she was a principal in another school district in Maricopa County. In her application, she submitted in March of 2017. She indicated that she would earn a PhD in December of 2017. She still has not earned it as of today's date. Both of these errors came about, by the way, because of an untrained person who was trying to do her job, a job that was asked of her, was not told how to look through the transcripts to determine if a doctorate had been awarded versus one that someone was working on. Ms. Cruz-Freeman did sign the supplemental contract form. She said she did not realize she was being paid the stipend because her previous employer was paying much more for doctoral stipends. The district stopped paying her stipend on April 5th, and she began paying back the district on the same date and continues to do so. And that's the end of my report on those three.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All that hard work. We move next to our information discussion, item seven B, placement of public comment on regular governing board meeting agendas, policy BEDB agenda.
Pardon, Mrs. Marshall. She's...
Yes.
...the way most of them.
Yep.
Presentations today.
Do you need me to stand there, Michelle?
Sorry, I sent it, actually.
Madam President, members of the board, we have policy BEDB agenda, which is the policy that lists the order in which you normally have your items on the regular meeting agendas. The last time the board revised this agenda was actually in December last year. I was surprised to see it was that long ago, because it doesn't seem like it's been that long. The red line I have up here is not what I usually do, which is show you a revision that I'm recommending. Instead, I'm showing you what you last did, which is move public comment from after student and staff recognition down to after information discussion. And the board at that time had a robust conversation about the pros and cons of that. And I've brought it back at the request of a number of board members and the public, so that you can have a first read of this tonight and discuss it. And I will certainly bring it back for a second read and further discussion. With that, I'll let you have a discussion about placement of the public comment in the agenda.
Board Member Becca? I'm one of them that asked that this be brought back up. And we understand, and please correct my wrong, part of the reason that we moved public comment behind information and discussion was so that the staff that was coming to do the information discussion could be at the beginning of the meeting and then go home, because otherwise, they ended up being at the very end and our staff faculty would be here, could be here, since our board meetings have been lasting longer than usual, a very long time. Is that correct?
That was certainly one of the reasons I heard the board discuss.
One of the reasons.
For the movement, yes.
Does anybody want to pipe in what were some of the others?
I could, so that people at the meetings could see the presentations, because oftentimes the presentations would be giving, were being given to an empty house, and people weren't seeing the improvements that were being made at our schools. People, in the past, I'd heard from parents, "I can't get to the board meeting at 5:00." Those are the top two. I'm thinking of the top...
Any others?
Yes.
One of the other reasons was because a lot of the public comments were answered during information discussion, and everybody was gone. Had they stayed and heard it, their questions would have been answered. So, I know that was a big...
Yeah, that was a big question.
Yes, that was definitely one of the points of discussion.
So since that has happened, we've also then had some comments that those people that want to give public comment, kind of the same idea, is that if, that they can only get there in the earlier part of the meeting, then they cannot get public comment. And that some of the public also has families, and since we don't know really when public comment's going to happen, because you cannot know the timing of a meeting, they could be also there for hours on end, and they have other responsibilities at home. I don't know, were there any others?
Well, even when it was earlier, you couldn't really time it, because depending on the length of student and staff recognition or the comments, so you really couldn't time it. I think there was some confusion. Cards are still taken up until the time the public comment begins, because I got an email from somebody saying they were told they needed to be there by 4:45 to turn in their card. And I couldn't find that anywhere on our district website, so I just wanted to make sure I was not mistaken about that.
I've actually taken cards after public comment has started.
Right.
And then I pass them over.
And I would agree. I have received cards past the point public comment has begun. The practice has absolutely been to accept them until public comment is done.
It should be noted, some districts do public comment at the very end of their meeting, so.
Well, and, Board Member Kirby?
And to that point, if some districts do at the end, the city of Scottsdale has their public comment as it's currently in our policy. They do it after information discussion.
Board Member Becca? And I will mention that some public comment, sometimes they therefore limit it. They'll limit it either by maybe shorter than a three minutes, especially if they have a lot of people that night. They also might limit it by saying it's only 45 minutes or an hour public comment. If you're not within that timeframe, then even though you've sat through the whole event, you'll have to wait till next time and maybe get closer in the queue. So there's a lot of reasons that are pros, that are cons. Taking all those into account, I want to propose something that maybe, I don't know if it's ever been done, but it's just an idea, of having public, a portion of the public comment, maybe 30 minutes, where it's limited to 30 minutes only, keeping it at the three-minute limit, right after student and staff recognition and celebration, and then also having the rest of public comment. So those people that could only get there in the earlier portion would have an opportunity. And those who could stay later could have it still be heard and still respect all the other reasons for why we moved public comment. So that's just an idea.
Would you limit it by time, like 30 minutes?
The first, the first one would be limited by time. The second one would not. That's an idea to think about.
You would, of course, also want to, if you were to split it, think about how you would choose who was going in the beginning. The fairest would be first come, first served if you were to do that, most likely, you know, I would suggest.
Yes. Thank you. That's how I was thinking. Board Member Hartman?
Well, for me, I know that this is, there's no perfect answer, because you can't find the right answer for everybody. Everybody has different circumstances. For me, what seems the most beneficial for the most people is ensuring that we have constituency that's as informed as possible. So I've, I appreciate now that we've moved it after information and discussion, because our information and discussion, quite frankly, are the, some of the, in my opinion, the most thoughtful conversations that we have. There's a lot of preparation that goes into that by our site leadership and by our administration. And I think it's only beneficial for people to hear that more often than not, much of the public comment is actually addressed in the informational items, in addition to the superintendent comments. So I think it's, for me, I know it's not a perfect answer, but I feel as though it helps get us to hopefully the most, the best answer for the most people. But I appreciate your other options.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, well, I guess, I agree. There's no perfect solution. And it just kind of depends upon the intent on the speaker, the commenter, that, where it's most helpful. I can't say, I would want to totally dismiss the idea that Board Member Beckham brings of, for those who really cannot stay late into the evening and don't have an opportunity to hear the information discussion items, but do have something that they want to comment on, seems reasonable to give them a window of time for that, you know, to think about it, I think.
It is hard to know those pros and cons.
I have a question on that.
Board Member Kirby?
So on your proposal, how would you address the agenda versus non-agenda comments?
Well, in public comment before that, they could, they could come on either one, correct?
I, I'm going to say, I'm going to say, as practice, it is very difficult to, sometimes, however the cards are handed in, to know for sure that they really are an agenda item or non-agenda item. I, I could take the time to do it, but sometimes how they're filled out by the commenter, it's unclear, and you're never quite sure, did they grab the right card or not. It's, and sometimes it's clear, but...
So do we ignore it?
Yes, right. So we've always ignored that. Usually we just get the cards as, as they get in, or as they're put in. They're just kept in that order.
I have a question on that.
Board Member Kirby?
Are we, is that, Michelle, is it agenda public comment cards versus non-agenda public comment cards? Is that a process, a requirement that's driven by statute?
No.
It's just policy? Because I feel like every government organization does that. They have on, commenting on items on the agendas, one color, and not on the agendas, a different color.
I think it's just a way to organize, you know, what do we have?
Is it just a way to organize?
I think Susan might have something to say.
Is that okay? Yes, of course. Madam President, members of the board, that's not required by statute. In fact, it's a little-known fact that the open meeting law does not require public comment at all.
Right.
But I've seen, the cards are a help, because it helps you that sort it out, as Michelle was just saying. And I haven't seen your cards. I saw them years ago, but I...
They haven't changed.
They haven't changed?
They changed. All right, they changed.
Another, another, another area of, another change is to give an opportunity to members of the public who don't really want to speak, but they are here in support of or opposing in opposition to an agenda item. You know, you can, I don't think you guys do that, but I know the city of Phoenix does that as well. So there's certain things you can do to understand more, but who, I can't remember who pointed out, sometimes it's hard to regulate as to whether they really understand what they're talking about as far as an agenda item.
Okay, thank you. How is that handled right now? You just get the cards and she's saying...
We have white cards and blue cards. And they fill out...
White is agenda? Or is white...
I forget.
Mine is one and...
One is...
I don't know which is which, but one color is agenda items, the other is non-agenda items.
Do you separate them out and then call them as a group?
No. Right, right now, we just take them. It's first come, first served. We don't distinguish. And again, I mean, you could sort them by color. It doesn't necessarily guarantee that the commenter has filled out the right colored card.
So when the commenter gets up to speak, do they say whether they're agenda or non-agenda? We don't have that. So is it just after the fact, you just pile them together so that when you go through them?
I never refer to them as on agenda.
So it doesn't matter whether it's agenda or non-agenda.
Well, it's all more, isn't it, for our sake? Because if it's not a non-agenda item, we can't comment on it. Is that correct?
That is certainly true. But we don't even know if it's agenda or non-agenda.
Well, if they're talking, it's not by what they...
Oh, okay. Let me talk about it that way.
And, and, and I'm going to say, a lot of people do fill it out accurately. I won't discuss this agenda or this topic. That is on the card, but, you know, generally don't read each card and verify, oh, yes, okay, you know, that's...
Well, we don't have time.
Yeah, that's, that's...
So I'm not making a proposal to change that at all? Sue, well...
I, I just, what I would add is that, I don't know how it would work if we had 30 minutes in the beginning of the meeting after student recognition. How would you determine who was going to speak in that, those 30 minutes?
That's the first come, first served. So whoever got here, they're at least put their name in. Now, if there was a large group and they could talk amongst themselves and say, okay, who needs to leave or, you know, stay and whatnot, and determine, then they just have to, we would not be determining that. It's when they hand it to you that that's the determination of the queue, is what I'm thinking, just as it's done now.
To the first 10 cards, basically.
I will just say, maybe we just think about this, and maybe somebody will come up with even a better idea. So, thank you for being able to discuss it.
It sounds to me...
Yeah, I know what you're asking, because we have a board meeting on Tuesday. And so I guess I'd ask if we want to bring it for further discussion that night or another, another meeting. If not that night...
I, I think I'd like some time, more time than between now and Tuesday. I want to, I want to take a look at other government entities, cities, towns, counties, Corporation Commission, and just see if there's any new forward thinking.
Board Member Kirby, that's actually what I was going to suggest. It sounds to me like we need some other ideas to consider before we're ready to really talk about proposed revisions. So I'm happy to look and see what our different entities around the valley are doing, and see what I can find out about how those are working before I bring it back. So it doesn't sound like it's ready to come back on Tuesday.
Not for Tuesday. Maybe for the June meeting.
Okay. I'll do some research.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for hanging in there with us. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Rebecca. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Good night, all.